I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roxanne, would you please call the roll? Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Here.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Rattan?
Here.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
My in favor is your own host.
Motion carries. Have a communications list. Think there were a couple of referrals on there for admin, which I think you're taking care of tonight, actually. Moving on to council subcommittee liaison reports. Admin, you had a whole lot of stuff on the agenda tonight, so. You have an additional report?
Um, I guess not. Can we do something about her? Most of what we discussed in our administration committee was, will be on our agenda later.
Thank you. Community service.
We have not met since our last meeting.
Finance.
The only thing that was discussed, finance, besides what's coming before the board, was the Russell Shaw, the administrative services, presented the long-range plan for both fire departments, equipment trucks, and proposal for funding. Do we need to have that as part of our capital improvement plan? Finance committee wanted the input, and it looks like a manageable plan, and does put the foresight into tagging budgeting that we do in our town, so we don't end up with spikes every 20 years to replace equipment. So I think it was a well thought out plan and well presented.
Thank you. Any questions for finance? IT, Mr. Song.
Information technology has not met since last meeting.
Landryson Planning, Mr. Dombrowski.
Landryson Planning has also not met since our last meeting.
Board of Education liaison, Mr. Allen.
Yes, I attended the Board of Education meeting on the 3rd. As you may or may not know, Michelle Hinton resigned from the board, and Stephanie Calhoun was named her replacement. Stephanie is an excellent fit in this board yet too. Tom Malone is now the Chair of Finance, and Stephanie Calhoun took Michelle's position on that same finance committee. Important note was that the building committee has a plan to move all the 6th graders to the Julia Long School starting this coming fall school year. So that would allow them to convert all kindergarten classes into All-Day K and put all the 6th graders in a segregated school, getting them prepared for junior high.
Good job. Repeat that.
Yeah, so the idea is to move the 6th grades because the Common Core.
The 4th 6th grades.
Yeah, so the 6th grades will be coming out of all elementary schools and then relocating into the Julia Long School.
Okay.
Okay, so then there will no longer be, as an example, Ledyard Center School will be K through 5 with All-Day K. So right now kindergarten is split half a day and a half a day, and they're taking 2 classrooms.
Okay.
In light of the fact that if they're going to All-Day K, they're going to need multiple classrooms.
Okay.
And that's part of preparing for the Common Core curriculum that they're working on. The agri-science department received a grant of $500,000, and they're looking to meet with the Town Council Finance Committee to hopefully get those dollars released soon.
What was the grant for?
It was for agri-science improvements and programs.
Are they going to be doing, like, building improvements or just?
I don't think it's programs, like they want to do more with aquaculture, more at Avery Point, things like that.
I just want to make sure we weren't doing other.
Yep, yep. And then the last thing was the high school, the last report that I did, the elementary schools did updates on their Common Core curriculum. This time around, the high schools did their reports on Common Core curriculum. So it seems that they're all getting up to speed and preparing for the new curriculum. That's it.
Any questions of our Board of Education liaison? I did have one quick question. Did they talk at all about the financial impact of All-Day kindergarten?
No, they did not speak of the financial impact on that. I'm happy to ask though next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
WPCA liaison report, Mr. Song.
WPCA has not met.
Wow. Any other liaison report, Mr. Marshall?
I was finally able to attend a Ledyard Ambulance Association meeting, first time in 3 years, and went really well. Jake Troy, who's the new director, ran the meeting very well, and he talked about this motorized lift that they're looking at to purchase. And because sometimes we have large patients, that it's very difficult to get in the back of the ambulance, and what this lift does, it mounts in the back of the ambulance, and it comes out and grabs the stretcher we already own, picks it up and loads it in. So there's no back strain or danger to the ambulance attendees. It's expensive, it's like $25,000, but if they buy it with other towns, they get a $5,000 break. And I was very much in support of this, and told him to go ahead and go forward and try and get it approved. We discussed a few other things, because he's new to the department, so he's just kind of getting his feet wet. Not ready to go public with most of it yet, but I will, so that's all.
Yes, I thought they already had stretchers that the front collapsed as they rolled it in, so they didn't have to lift it anymore.
Right, this is, well, sometimes it's hard to get your fingers up to push the button and raise those legs. So this is an actual unit that mounts in the back of the ambulance, and an arm will come out and grab the stretcher.
But I know, I mean, I knew they already did something, because I got it demonstrated when I used it, even though I wasn't trying to find out, it worked. I took your whole demonstration of it.
Mostly for a large patient, that they're having trouble balancing, and when you release that, it's an awful lot of weight.
It is, yeah.
And you can't always get your hands on that button, even though there's 2 buttons to release it.
Right, okay.
It's tough, and this will do it for you.
This is even more technical.
Right.
Any other questions? Any other liaison reports? Report of the mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. A few items you may have seen in the paper on Monday about a prescription discount plan that's being offered through CCM, and several towns have already taken advantage of this. Yesterday morning, I contacted CCM, had a very good conversation with their member services person. Several towns have begun to look into the application process. I have the forms that have been sent to me, I need to look at them. What was recommended was, first of all, she asked if she could come to a council meeting, which is what she's been doing in other towns. I have requested that she come to the next council meeting. She's going to talk about a 5-minute presentation. And then the town would fill out the application, run it, of course, through our town attorney. Okay, thank you. Run it through our town attorney, and again, our town attorney would be familiar, because they do represent other towns that are taking advantage of this. Norwich is the one that she thought was out in front on this. It's for individuals who don't have insurance or don't have prescription insurance. It's sponsored by organizations such as Stop and Shop, or they're participating, Stop and Shop, CBS. So it would be ideal for our citizens, they talk about 35% discounts on prescriptions. So it's something I'm willing to pursue, and I will keep you informed as we go, obviously, before we make any decision. It's always a fine print, and I want to make sure that we're on good ground now. You have been aware, reading in the papers, in the news, about Ledzlight and the issues we had here at 756 and 758, current Ledyard Highway. Those have, both have been remediated, and the wells have been, have been coronated, they've been surged, and, well, they've been purged through the buildings, and both of those are now online. This morning, we got news from Ledzlight that there was some issues with SQUAD and some of the, some of the wells there. And, you know, I sent the information to you this afternoon, so you'll have a chance to look at that. If you have questions, you can, you can ask them, and I will be happy to forward them and speak with our Ledzlight representative, who is in the office tomorrow. I met with April Capone, she is the Connecticut Intergovernmental Coordinator for the Office of Management and Budget. She contacted me, she's basically traveling around the state, speaking with different town CEOs, just to get, you know, from us what our issues are, the things that she should, that she should know about. It was a very good conversation. Coincidentally, she happens to be the former mayor of East Haven, which immediately perked my ears up, because East Haven is the location of a public reservoir which has.
Access.
Which.
Public access.
Has public access, and I think about that every time I drive by it on 95, it's right there on the side. So it was very easy for me to relate one of our issues to her. And I know any, any hopes you could be on that, I'm sure would be appreciated. I did send her a letter following up on the issues we discussed, and I sent her a copy of that. And finally, today, I spent the morning at the State DOT office in Newington, discussing resolution of some seat, southeastern area transit issues. That's my report.
And we have any questions of the mayor?
Yes, I received a question about the Algen Heights water lines. It seems that some of the residents haven't heard anything, and they'd like to know what's going on. I mean, they got an initial letter. I'm just messing.
Avery Hill Road is in the law, that was in the day newspaper.
No, no, it was concerns, no.
Oh, okay. This is Algen Heights, this is not Avery Hill.
I'm sorry, did I say Avery Hill?
No, you said, I said.
No, no, you said Algen Heights.
Oh, okay.
But it is the folks in Al.
Yes, it is the folks in Algen Heights.
I have had discussions with Chairman Jim Diaz about that. I've given him my recommendations. My understanding is that the WPCA is putting some information, is putting some figures together, and Counselor Salmons can help you out on this. But my feeling is, my recommendation is that we be upfront with people and give them as much information as soon as possible. It's not going to be entirely accurate, I don't care if we give them ranges, but I think in fairness to those individuals, and also based on our experience most recently with Route 117 assessments, people want to know that, you know, there's going to be 3 charges. There's going to be, you know, an assessment, there's going to be a hookup charge, and there's going to be the physical contractor that they have to hire. And I think in fairness to them.
I told her some of that, and I mentioned what some of the people on 117 had paid.
Yeah, and again, actually, we can do better than that, because I think right now, we have the information to actually create a spreadsheet that would probably give people a pretty good indication. Now, the thing is, you've got quite a variety there. You know, you've got Algen Heights, you've got Avery Hill, and then you've got Avery Hill Road.
Yeah, she was saying Algen Heights.
Quite a range, but I think in fairness, we ought to let people know, there was information that was provided to people on 117, and it was, it was pretty good. It gave people an approximate, hey, here's how we do the calculations, here's what it is, what it would be. Not in terms of money, but how it would be calculated. I know when I was at the senior center a couple of weeks ago, speaking, one of them raised their hand, you know, I'm really, because I live on a corner, you know, how do you measure my life? And it was a good question, but it was an easy answer. We take the average of your 2 frontiers. I think it made that person feel very good, because the question, I think, we don't know what it is, I'll tell them.
Yeah, you're going to get a great question.
So I would agree, I think the W, and I'll defer to Council Salmons.
Yeah, and so, just a couple of comments on that. We shared a lot of information with the residents who came out for the public hearings for the Algen Heights project, but that doesn't mean everybody who lives there heard it.
Right.
So I totally agree, we need to share more information. I saw the same communication with you and Chairman Diaz of the WPCA, and I believe they are working on that, and I also think it's a great idea, we need to get the information out. There's also, for anybody who's on Facebook, there's been a lot of dialogue there about it. Counselor Chairman Davis has a website, which is Ledyard Gales Ferry Community Forum, and there's been some information there. But anyway, we can communicate, we're going to take it. So the only thing I would say is, you're right, Mayor, you can't give people an exact estimate of, or an exact number, you can only give an estimate of what an assessment will be, because you can't do the assessment until all the project costs committed. And obviously, we're in the middle of the project, so we don't know what the total cost. We do know what it should cost, and it's on track to commit it then. So I think we can give some pretty good estimates.
If I could just follow up on that. I agree, with due respect to Chair, Chairperson Davis and the website, it's, I find it amusing sometimes, that you'll get a long track of things on there, and, you know, the question that was asked at the beginning, by time it gets to the ending, you know, people are asking, you know.
Totally different question.
Where's the best place to buy tulips?
Welcome to electronics.
But, but on the positive side, I was up, I participated in the Cove, paddle in the Cove or something this, this weekend, and driving up there is great, and I was fascinated by the fact that, you know, we have road that's already been piped and patched, and my, my understanding is that we're doing 700 feet a day of that pipe, and so we're moving right along. And that's great, because it seems to me if we can get the pipe in Avery Hill Road quickly, if you go up the road, you'll see that the right away, back to Holmberg is where they've already been working back in there, you know, just clearing out, so it's moving right along, and with a fairly mild fall and early winter, we should be able to get some, quite a bit of progress there, with the hope that maybe early spring, we can start doing the streets. So I'm very pleased with where that project's going.
Any other questions from the mayor?
I have a question. Today, we had an oil spill.
Yes, we did.
On Route 117, and I certainly commend all our emergency services people, but I have to say, I'm really disappointed that we didn't institute Everbridge. That, to me, was the perfect use of Everbridge, and I thought that was exactly the kind of thing that we anticipated would be announced on Everbridge. So do you know what happened there?
I would agree with you. Unfortunately, I was in, I was in my meeting, and I was just watching texts of what was going on, and I was in a car coming back down as I was talking to people, and by that time, things had already happened. I will say that on the positive side, you know, the police were there, and they did notify the schools, because that was the first issue, and the feeling was to do that. But, of course, my question is, it's one thing to notify the schools and, you know, the school bus drivers to make sure they take the right detours. The problem is, you've got people at home. We had a very good example in Gales Ferry, when we first instituted it, when we had the accident at intersection of Long Cove Road and Route 12, and we used Everbridge, you know, set a call out at 6:30 in the morning, and it was very well received. So, you know, what I'm thinking of, and I relate to them, was that, you know, you can't just think about the people who are right there, you've got to think about those who
Want to drive down that road?
Are down in rotten shopping and may get a call on their cellphone, because detouring Route 117 is a lot harder than detouring Route 12. And so I will speak to police, I will speak to my staff. We do have a protocol, and the protocol does, in fact, handle this, and who would do it? I think we just need to have a better definition of, you know, what triggers something like this? The fact that the scene is secured, and everything's going well? There are some issues we need to deal with as to the calls going out, and then what always happens when calls go out is calls come in, and what the volume of that return calling is, and, you know, when's the road going to be open, when the road's going to be open, when's the road going to be open, you know, and you start getting back.
It's closed about 5 hours.
But I know that, and that's, and actually, their estimates on it were pretty good. So we had pretty good information, which, it's a work in progress, but, you know, here's how we learn, and I would, I would propose that maybe we oversaturate the public with information early on, and if we realize it's getting to be too much, or telling them too much, but we will definitely take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any old business? Anyone like to amend the agenda? New business? Admin, take it away. You have lots.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the tenant lease, that Lester House has contained in the draft dated September 27, 2012. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Rattan? Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wadecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Dombrowski?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
My in favor, the senior opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
We had a comment earlier from Mr. Cherry. Do we want to make that?
Well, why don't we go ahead and make the motion and second, and then we can amend it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve a proposed ordinance for the abatement of property taxes for housing for low or moderate income persons, as contained in the draft dated September 20, 2012, incorporating comments received at the September 12, 2012 public hearing.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. At this time, do you want to amend? Maybe we can just friendly amend this.
Yes, I can.
Would you be okay with that?
Yes.
To make the change that Mr.
Yes, I received a question about the Algen Heights water lines. It seems that some of the residents haven't heard anything and they'd like to know what's going on. I mean, they got an initial letter. I'm just messing with them.
Avery Hill Road is not ours. That was in the day newspaper.
No, no, it was concerns. No, they got concerns.
This is Algen Heights, this is not Avery Hill. This is Algen Heights.
I'm sorry, did I say Avery Hill?
No, you said I said.
No, no, you said Algen Heights.
Oh, okay.
But it is the folks in Algen Heights.
Yes, it is the folks in Algen Heights.
I have had discussions with Chairman Jim Diaz about that. I've given him my recommendations. My understanding is that the WPCA is putting some information, is putting some figures together and Counselor Salmons can help me out on this, but my feeling is, my recommendation is that we be upfront with people and give them as much information as soon as possible. It's not going to be entirely accurate. I don't care if we give them ranges, but I think in fairness to those individuals and also based on our experience most recently with Route 117 assessments, people want to know that, you know, there's going to be three charges. There's going to be, you know, an assessment, there's going to be a hookup charge, and there's going to be the physical contractor that they have to hire. And I think in fairness to them.
Right. I told her some of that and I mentioned what some of the people on 117 had paid.
Yeah, and again, actually, we can do better than that because I think right now we have the information to actually create a spreadsheet that would probably give people a pretty good indication. Now, the thing is you've got quite a variety there. You know, you've got Algen Heights, you've got Avery Hill, and then you've got Avery Hill Road. They'd be quite a range, but I think in fairness we ought to let people know. There was information that was provided to people on 117 and it was, it was pretty good. It gave people an approximate, hey, here's how we do the calculations, here's what it is, what it would be. Not in terms of money, but how it would be calculated. I know when I was at the senior center a couple of weeks ago speaking, one of them raised their hands, you know, really, because I live on a corner, you know, how do you measure my life? And it was a good question, but it was an easy answer. We take the average of your two front ears. I think it made that person feel very good because the question of people don't know anything, so.
Yeah, you're gonna get a great question.
So I would agree. I think the W, and I'll defer to Counselor Salmons.
Yeah, and so, just a couple of comments on that. We shared a lot of information with the residents who came out for the public hearings for the Algen Heights project, but that doesn't mean everybody who lives there heard it. So I totally agree, we need to share more information. I saw the same communication with you and Chairman Diaz of the WPCA and I believe they are working on that and I also think it's a great idea. We need to get the information out. There's also, for anybody who's on Facebook, there's been a lot of dialogue there about it. Counselor Chairman Davis has a website which is Legear Galesbury Community Forum. There's been some information there, but anyway, we can communicate, we're gonna take it. So, the only thing I would say is you're right, Mayor. You can't give people an exact estimate or an exact number. You can only give an estimate of what an assessment will be because you can't do the assessment until all the project costs are committed. And obviously, we're in the middle of the project, so we don't know what the total cost. We do know what it should cost and it's on track to commit it then. So I think we can give some pretty good estimates.
If I could just follow up on that. I agree with due respect to Chairperson Davis and the website. It's, I find it amusing sometimes that you'll get a long track of things on there and, you know, the question that was asked at the beginning, by time it gets to the end, you know, people are asking, you know, where's the best place to buy tulips?
Welcome to electronics.
But, but on the positive side, I was up, I participated in the Cove paddle in the Cove or something this weekend and driving up there is great. And I was fascinated by the fact that, you know, we have road that's already been piped and patched and my, my understanding is that we're doing 700 feet a day of that pipe and so we're moving right along. And that's great because it seems to me if we can get the pipe in Avery Hill Road quickly, if you go up the road, you'll see that the right of way back to Holmberg is already, they've already been working back in there, you know, just clearing out. So it's moving right along and with a fairly mild fall and early winter, we should be able to get some, quite a bit of progress there with the hope that maybe early spring we can start doing the streets. So I'm very pleased with where that project's going.
Any other questions from the mayor?
I have a question. Today we had an oil spill.
Yes, we did.
On Route 117. I certainly commend all our emergency services people, but I have to say, I'm really disappointed that we didn't institute Everbridge. That, to me, was the perfect use of Everbridge and I thought that was exactly the kind of thing that we anticipated would be announced on Everbridge. So, do you know what happened there?
I would agree with you. Unfortunately, I was in, I was in my meeting and I was just watching texts of what was going on and I was in a car coming back down as I was talking to people and by that time, things had already happened. I will say that on the positive side, you know, the police were there and they did notify the schools because that was the first issue and the feeling was do that. But, of course, my question is, it's one thing to notify the schools and, you know, the school bus drivers to make sure they take the right detours. The problem is you've got people at home. We had a very good example in Galesbury when we first instituted it, when we had the accident at intersection of Long Cove Road and Route 12, and we used Everbridge. You know, set a call out at 6:30 in the morning and it was very well received. So, you know, what I'm thinking of and I relay to them was that, you know, you can't just think about the people who are right there. You've got to think about those who are down in rotten shopping and may get a call on their cellphone because detouring Route 117 is a lot harder than detouring Route 12. And so, I will speak to the police, I will speak to my staff. We do have a protocol and the protocol does in fact handle this and who would do it. I think we just need to have a better definition of, you know, what triggers something like this. The fact that the scene is secured and everything's going well. There are some issues we need to deal with as to the calls going out and then what always happens when calls go out is calls come in and what the volume of that return calling is and, you know, when's the road gonna be open, when the road's gonna be open, when's the road gonna be open, you know, and you start getting back.
It's closed about five hours.
But I know that. And that's, and actually, their estimates on it were pretty good. So we had pretty good information, which it's, it's a work in progress, but, you know, here's how we learn. And I would, I would propose that maybe we oversaturate the public with information early on and if we realize it's getting to be too much or telling too much, but we will definitely take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any old business? Anyone like to amend the agenda? New business, admin, take it away. You have lots.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the tenant lease that Lester House has contained in the draft dated September 27, 2012.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McRatten?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
We had a comment earlier from Mr. Cherry. Do we want to make that?
Well, why don't we go ahead and make the motion and second it and then we can amend it.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve a proposed ordinance for the abatement of property taxes for housing for low or moderate income persons as contained in the draft dated September 20, 2012, incorporating comments received at the September 12, 2012 public hearing.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. At this time, do you want to amend? Maybe we can just friendly amend this.
Yes, I can.
To make the change that Mr. Cherry suggested.
Agreed. Friendly amendment to include the language, reading an applicant shall submit a certified appraisal of the property including any easements or restrictions to the town to the Legear Tax Assessment.
Fine, fine with that. Okay. At this time, any discussion? Yes.
Sir, I'm not completely clear. Are we going to refer this, take it back, or actually vote on it?
We're actually gonna vote on it.
We're voting on it.
We did send it back after the last meeting and all the changes that were.
Okay, alright.
Those changes were made and we made just one more little one now because Mr. Cherry brought it up tonight.
Alright.
Couldn't have brought it up last.
It's okay, we'll let it go.
No, it was, it was a good correction.
Yes.
Any, any, oh, go ahead.
Okay, so, now that I'm caught up, there were some very good comments made tonight, but I happen to not agree with most of them. For example, the idea that.
This is discussed.
This is discussed.
This is just the.
This is the public hearing.
This is the one you're saying.
Sorry.
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 See, this was the public hearing.
The last meeting and it went back to admin and the suggested changes that were made from, that we got during the public hearing were put in, retained at admin and brought back.
Paying attention.
Everybody, everybody's on the right ordinance now.
Those multi-ty.
Any other questions, comments? Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Next item.
Considering the many public comments made earlier.
That's fine. We can refer it back to committee, but I would like to at least have comments from counselors because we did not do that during the public hearing. So is that, is that appropriate?
The motion goes to the table.
We can do that. Yes, go ahead.
Motion to adopt a proposed town Legear Blight Ordinance as contained in the draft dated August 29, 2012.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded.
No building to speak.
No, you get to speak and I have.
So, some of the comments may seem to make reasonable sense, but having participated in this, some of the 12 years of writing this play ordinance, there were some very valid reasons for writing it the way we did. For example, when you talk about letting the health inspector, the health director, and the building official, and the zoning officer, it seems like, well, why wouldn't you pick one? And the answer is, when you have blight, you may have a health issue and you may have to call in the health department to inspect the premise and then make a determination that, yeah, that's a, that's a public danger for health reasons. In other cases, you're going to see building code violations. In other cases, you're going to see fire code violations. And what the, the original Landys Playing Group that worked on this did was say, yes, we need to address all of those and we said in the ordinance, it says any one odd combination of, so that we can cast a net that addresses all of the issues. And I have some experience with this, not only from having been on the committee, but also that, as I think the mayor mentioned, we have a zoning citation now that we can't use against known blight cases. I've had personal experience with a house that has health issues, frequent visits from the police. It is not habitable. I think I mentioned health issues and it also just, it's not being kept up. You've got exterior problems, you've got interior problems, and yet, none of the separate departments can do anything about that residence. But it is not only a health threat, it's a public safety threat because of the activities that are going on in the house. So this ordinance does provide the town with the toolbox, the tool in the toolbox, toolbox, as mentioned. I like the idea of going back to groups to look at it some more, but there are very valid reasons for the way it's written, even though it appears that it's a little, you know, some of the comments, as I say, seem to make sense, but there are reasons for the way it's written. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes.
In my opinion, I mean, the valid, a lot of the comments that were made during the public hearing were valid in my point. I think, I think it would be prudent to send it back to committee to review those comments to see where, if we need to make any minor changes to it, then send it back to the council.
Just don't want to lose sight of the fact that some of the, you know, we put a lot of time into it to write it the way it was and we don't want to have it go back to the committee and think, okay, let's check that out.
No, I agree, but I think we should take the consideration of bringing it back to committee to at least discuss all the items over running tonight.
And stack.
And stack, correct.
And I would just like to make this one point as well, that, and Mr. Cherry brought this up, I tried to make a point earlier too. Blight and blight ordinances are something that are highly regulated by state statute. So we are, we are not crafting this out of thin air. We are not crafting it out of our desire to just create a blight ordinance. This is a very regulated kind of ordinance, regulated by state statute, and we've done our best to stick with that. I agree that there are several comments made tonight that we need to address and I'm all in favor of taking it back to committee, reworking it a little bit. But, you know, please keep in mind, this is something very regulated by state statute, so.
Any other comments?
My only comments would be that this has been worked on for a long time. It's gone back to subcommittee numerous times. And I give Counsel Eichelberg a lot of credit for having taken a long time to bring it to a public hearing because there is a lot of concern. I mean, I will say, my idea of blight is not Mayor Fratolico's idea of blight. Your next door neighbor gives blight to you and it may not fit the criteria under the ordinance, but I think you've taken it back and done a lot of work on it. So I, I will give you a lot of credit for taking it back with the comments since I missed a lot of the comments. But it still is going to be something that's been worked on for a long time. I think we really need just another tool to get after the people who aren't keeping up their property. And as long as it's not used as a vendetta like it's been used in some other places, I think it's a great idea, as long as it's crafted so that it's not able to be used as, I don't like my next door neighbors, so I can call up and complain about them. And I don't think that was ever the intent. I know that's why you brought it back into committee. It's been there a long time and it's been worked on. I mean, Chairman Davis, this was something you wanted years ago and we've never gotten to it. So I think it's a useful thing. I think we need to really work through it. But I, no matter what shape or form it comes out, and there's always going to be somebody that's not going to like it anyway, which is what we always find out is the case. But I think there's been a lot of thought put into it and I think going back to subcommittee is a great idea. But I think you've done a lot of work on it in subcommittee and I give you guys a lot of credit for that.
I would just like to make a final comment and that is, of all the calls I get or emails I get, the majority of them are why don't we have a blight ordinance? That's probably the thing I've heard about in my, I'm not sure how many years. We've only been working on it six years. Whoever said 10 years was actually incorrect. It's, it's only six years. At the time, we actually did have our zoning officer at the time meet with us. We also met with the building official. But in fairness, it's been six years, so now we have new cast of characters. So the idea of meeting with them is certainly a good one. I'd like to speak specifically to bank foreclosures because that's something I'm very familiar with, having worked with banks, specifically one bank for a number of years and then worked with probably hundreds of bank foreclosures. When you have a house that has blight and it's in the city of Norwich, man, they have, they move quick on this, on the banks. And I'll get a call right away saying, hey, we got a call from the city of Norwich. You gotta get out there and get that taken care of. That is a hammer you can use if you have a bank foreclosure. And that was one of the reasons I really started looking into this with those bank foreclosure issues. It's very frustrating to people. You know, I jokingly tell people, if you see a rat, that's the absolute best thing because then you can call the health district. If you don't see a rat, you have absolutely nothing right now to, to help fix this problem. So from all those perspectives, I think it's good. You guys did a great job. And again, I thought the comments were all great and I think we incorporate those and then we're going to have a nice piece of legislation. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
A comment was made about the town attorney reviewing it. We haven't done that yet. If that's something you want to do, please let me know. You probably ought to think of incorporating comments, but that's your call whether you want to do that or not.
I would think that's probably not a bad idea.
It won't hurt.
Yeah, but on the safe side.
I would like to echo, kind of like Counsel Eichelberg earlier, when, you know, we're campaigning last year after education, this is probably the most raised issue. The one that I remember up at Algen Heights was it was the neighbors had the neighbor's house and it was falling apart and it then went away for years. And so, having some tool for the town to be able to, after bank foreclosures or other property that's been abandoned, gives them, but if you don't have that tool, there's no recourse. And the owners of the properties, the neighbor of them have no recourse. Many times, there's no way to even identify who owns the property, who is going to stand up for it. And the best they can do is go to a small claims, you get an injunction, which doesn't do anything for the value of the property. So some tool needs to be available to be able to enforce those kinds of situations and allow residents of the town to be able to enjoy the property that they own.
Any other comments? Something?
Motion to table.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item?
I lost my place.
Number four.
We didn't.
Make a motion to approve the proposed nutrition site server senior center job description as contained in the draft dated August 2012.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roxanne, call the vote.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item, fine.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed senior center program director job description as contained in the draft dated August 2012.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Eichelberg, what kind of changes were you looking at here? Anybody?
We have to.
Yes. I love I love I love.
It was mostly administrative changes.
Yes.
The wording.
The wording, when we sat down and worked with the, with FX and then he took the senior commissioner there, you even, mostly just update job, you know, the job descriptions that were rewritten, it's been 10, 15 years old.
Okay. So just brings them up to date and recommended by the senior commissioner.
You, you.
Yes, they've changed.
Changes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Roxanne, call the vote. Yes, that's right.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number six.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed administrative assistant to the Legere Police Job Description as contained in the draft dated October 2012.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded.
Did the person leave the job?
What is this one?
This is another rewrite of the old job description. The actual job description we rewrote was dating from 1984 and this was at the regulations of these Sergeant Gilman and Lieutenant Pimvis Stein comparing it up to speed on what the person actually does.
A lot of times, we don't rewrite job descriptions till the individual leaves the job and I was hoping this individual had not left the job.
No, no, no. I'm at the point now where we're getting ahead of the.
Oh, that's good. Good. We like that. Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number seven.
Thank you for keeping me on. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint the following members to the Parks and Rec Commission for a three-year term ending December 29, 2015. Mr. Brian M. Hinton, Republican of Five Royal Oaks Drive, Ledger. Mr. David D. Thompson, Unaffiliated of 37 Bittersweet Tribe, Galesbury.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roxanne, call the roll.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Next item, number eight.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Craig Gilbert, Republican of 9 Tucker's Run Ledger, to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a three-year term ending October 31, 2015, filling a vacancy left by Mr. Lipinski.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Just wanted to publicly thank Mr. Lipinski for his many years of service on the WPCA and to Mr. Gilbert for stepping up so quickly.
Yes, for sure. Roxanne, would you like to call the roll?
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratton?
Yes.
Mr. Song?
Yes.
Mrs. Wedecky?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Moving on to finance. Number nine.
I'd like to make a motion to allow overspending up to a total expenditure of $33,285 in account 101121553695, soft push supported.
Second.
Very quickly, it is not an over expenditure of $33,000. It is an over expenditure of budget line, which was originally $30,485. So it's only a $2,800 over expenditure of the line. Language implies, it's only really a $2,800 over expenditure of the line.
By the town charter, we have to approve over expenditures in line items. After April 1st, they expect to fully find the funds to transfer, but they asked ahead of time to over expend, which is great because that's what we're supposed to get to approve. But in finance, I thought we were over spending $33,000 and I almost had it.
Three readings for the other.
Any questions for finance? Roxanne, call it.
I just wanted to comment also that this particular expenditure was to allow online payment. And three, four years ago, several residents suggested online payment. It allows the resident to pay more easily and it saves the town a lot of money in getting its money more quickly. People aren't spending gas and it gives a lot of benefits and, and, okay, so we spent $3,000 more, but this is a huge benefit.
And the fee to the taxpayer has not been worked out yet, but it appears that it will be somewhere from 50 cents to a dollar.
Yes.
So a lot more people will pay online.
Absolutely. The other part of it is about half the cost of being going past up to a person.
Yes, okay. Roxanne, call the roll.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Mr. Eichelberg?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mrs. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nebraska?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Motion carries. Item number 10.